Can you mute everyone but us? Happens.
He's muted, Rick is muted. Speaker over there is turned right in.
Are we getting an echo? Oh, you fixed it. Whatever you did, you fixed it. Good job. Call this meeting to order. Thank you very much. If if one of you is the echo person and you'd like to speak, we'll suffer through it, but that's often the easiest way to make echoes go away. I will call this meeting to order of the Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023 Select Board Meeting. This is on a special special date to accommodate our upcoming informational meeting. Welcome, everyone. Do we have any changes or adjustments to the agenda?
I would like to discuss a meeting after the 19th, which is the deadline for people to petitions for articles for town meeting, and I forgot to put on Dennis's little energy report.
Uh. Put it on. Sorry, what? I don't know what.
Briefly discussed that you emailed, you responded through Fox then.
Yes. Okay, got it.
It'll be the meeting for the 12.
So when do you want your second meeting, your fourth meeting to be?
It just added to the agenda.
All right, we will do that under new business.
Or under next meeting.
Yeah. And just to be clear, that was for the 12th, or that was for a different day?
The 12th is
the info. You want to do it?
Is when people have
After the vote.
Have an article on the petition to have an article added to the town.
Okay. Any other adjustments? If not, we will move on. Citizens input. Would anyone on the phone like to provide input? Thank you for nodding your heads. Mr. Fowler?
I would certainly like to make a statement that six o'clock
One moment, one moment.
And seven o'clock really gives people enough time to go home, spend a little bit of time with their family, have dinner, and then come to a meeting. Six o'clock is very rushed, and it becomes very difficult for people to get here. So that's my citizens input.
Thank you very much. Any other input? If not, we'll move on. Public Works update. Rick is here. You can unmute Rick and we'll see if you have an.
Alrighty.
You have a it's separate?
No, it's part of the laptop.
Sometimes there's one. The monitor.
Yeah. The only way that I've been doing this is through the laptop and the potential speaker and built in microphone.
We want to ask them to call back. I think we'd like you to call back on the cell.
Okay.
And we'll talk about other things. When you come back, we'll bring you in.
Okay, I'll do that right now.
Anything else? We need you to log off, Rick. Kyle, can you mute, please?
Yeah, sorry.
That's right. Thanks. We're just having sound troubles.
Me too.
Okay. Do you want to give a report, Eric or Gail, about the meeting with the fire fire marshal and the certificate of occupancy? I heard that happened.
I missed fire marshal, so I can't report him.
Oh.
He was, Rick and Eric met. He was there for a total maybe three minutes.
Well, then.
Maybe five. He was in and out. There was, he didn't have a whole lot. He had to shim up the doors to make the transition between the outside of doors. He had a couple of signs he wanted us to install, and we got to get fire extinguishers, uh, fire extinguishers in the building, which we already so, and there's a he wants to sign on the door with braille for the bathroom.
But my goodness. Kyle, can you mute, please?
Alright, I'm trying, hold on.
Well, I'm back now. Is it mine?
You need to mute it.
Okay. Is Kyle muted? It doesn't look like he's muted. Now he's muted. But it's you, Rick.
Well, that's bizarre because
Rick, you need off of your computer.
Sure.
But he was on mute. There you go. Thank you. You sound great. You.
Yeah, but now I don't get to see all your lovely faces.
Well.
You'll get the outer space echo.
Yeah, we couldn't. So
Yeah, the sacrifices we make for technology here. So I did hear you mentioning that Eric was filling in on the fire marshal visit. Yeah.
So do we have a CO?
Yes, we do. I forward, I was going to email it to you, but then I said I'll save the build up the excitement and present it to you today here at the meeting. But yes, we have been authorized or given permission to occupy the building. There was a few items that needed to be added, some signage and some access. But very minor, and Eric's taking care of one of the two, and I've got the signs coming. They should be here. I would say probably Thursday or Friday. So we'll have that. The punch list items are all completed with the few minor, or a few exceptions. One being the utility room, that's the last, still working on getting the loose ends tied up in there, but that should take place this week, I'd say by Friday. The one that's going to be kind of ongoing is the concrete slab out in front of the of the entry porch because I had conversations with Myron White about pouring it, and he advised it would be best to wait because even though we do have a few days of warm weather in the near future here, he felt that the exposed free flow cycles for the remainder of the January, February, and March would probably be more of a of a risk than a reward to get that little bit of concrete poured yet this year. And so I kind of deferred that to his expertise because that's what he does, and I would hate to do it and then have to rework it in the spring and have all the passersby make note of that. So with your indulgence, I'd refer to suggest that we defer that to the spring. However, the pipe bollards on the exterior, we are coming up with a workaround. The truck is, our auger truck is still not running, but we're going to employ the use of an excavator and use tubes and do it that way. So hopefully, that will be done here, perhaps even yet this week. So those items are kind of the last remaining pieces. All of the controls are in the punch list that I received early on. Switching and ventilation controls and and trim items have all been addressed. So we are, we are just about over the, over the last hurdle.
I had a question. Didn't we have a motion sensor planned for the one exterior light that faces the road?
We do, and that's installed.
And why is, why is the light always on when I drive by?
Oh.
Maybe we need to readjust the motion set, the, you know, the eye?
Perhaps Eric
Been on every time I've driven by. I don't drive by that much. It might be a mall.
And the lights.
Yeah, you would.
Eric, he thought it was dialed in quite well, but I'm not, I'm not sure. I can't really comment on that one, but I can definitely have to investigate.
So the lights that face the old town garage, what's the deal with those?
Those are
Okay.
Yep.
Like, just a few times forgotten to be shut off or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, well, you got people in there don't know what the switch is doing. You can't see that.
Perfect.
You can't see
But once you guys occupy it.
Right. I shut them off this afternoon because somebody, the plumber was in there, he turned them on barely. So I shut them off this afternoon.
Yeah, some of those switches aren't intuitive, and you might want to mark them somehow.
I happen to know he's got a label maker.
Well, there you go. So can you just let me know if that motion sensor?
Yeah.
Needs to be tipped or something.
I've come in in the morning and it's off until I pull in the driveway, but I have noticed if I have seen it on too, so I'm not sure what's making it.
Where is the, where is the eye?
It's right next to it.
Yeah, maybe it's just go down a little more.
Yeah, they've got blinders on it, so maybe we need a couple, because it has, I pulled right in in front of the door, and it was off the whole time. And then as soon as I got
Maybe it's I think it's when a car is driving by, isn't it? I thought was happening, but
Yeah, but it didn't come on when I drove by with pickup. Maybe it's somebody coming up the hill.
I was coming up the hill.
Maybe that's
There you go.
Because it doesn't come on down the hill.
Okay.
That's the only active garage from above. Don't, don't come up the hill. Don't come down.
No, I wasn't going to the garage. I was just driving by. Other things on your list?
Not for Rick, no, I think.
Yep. I, I do want to, and we don't need to do it now, Rick, continue the conversation about makeup air for that ventilation system.
Okay.
So that's, that's still on my radar.
Okay. Yeah, we did test it out, but again, any and all exploration is welcome and would love to be exhausted and so that we're sure we have it dialed right in.
So Gail is handing us the progress payment number six invoice that you submitted.
Correct, for Morton Crew Complete. It's ideally, it, and it says trade work remaining, which is 99% done, but yet we'll, we'll hold off on that part because we've got components in there that have a springtime timeline. So, so this will be the, the last payment until, you know, we, such time as everything's finalized, complete.
And so then you'll turn the building over to us, and we will occupy. And we will ensure the building.
Of when?
As when Gail is asking.
I would say as soon as I get the study room finalized, so hopefully, and then the bollard. So I'm anticipating end of this week.
Can I start moving stuff in? It's a nice rainy week, you know?
Absolutely. Yep.
Yeah, so we'll officially take over once you complete those tasks, but the guys will start moving in because we have a CO. That
Correct.
Yes, and I think we should make our insurance start right away, just because our big expensive trucks will be in there.
Yeah, and the motor.
Yeah.
But they're insured as equipment. They're not covered by the contents of the building. They're insured separately.
Okay. Although if the building burned down, I think the equipment people start looking at the building people. I don't know how that works, but
It's all just going to be something.
So they're just going to be blaming themselves.
Yep. So I don't, I don't know if you wanted a
Well, somebody needs to sign and say that we can pay that.
Okay. Do you guys agree we're going to pay this?
There's a balance due of $51,000 something.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Does our insurance need to inspect it for the insurance?
That's an interesting question. I don't know the answer to that. I think all right, so approved by consensus to move that forward. Anything else for Rick?
I've got one. Is the, one of the documents need to be submitted to Division of Fire Safety is the final construction valuation form. Basically, it's what was submitted initially, and then any changes, increases, decreases, and then the final number. So we do have a difference in what we initially submitted and what we have under paper now. So and, and the question it asks for, signed by the applicant. So on the previous document, the, the permit document, Kathy, you signed that one. So I'm guessing this one might be appropriate for you as well.
Yep. So you're going to fill that out, and I'll sign it, and the number that you're putting in is the number we're paying you. Is that correct?
Right. Well, yeah, I'm going to use the number that we had for site and demolition plus the building valuation, which increased a little bit. So the net result is that the Division of Fire Safety is going to be looking for a few more shackles.
Okay.
But I'll fill that out and email over.
Okay. And can they, will they take up PDF? Do you know? They must.
Uh, yeah, I'm pretty sure they will. Yeah, but they'll need to check, so they'll have to go through the mail, but yeah.
Other questions for Rick? The next item, and you might want to just listen to this. Efficiency Vermont offered us $1,000 incentive, and I signed to the contract, and I would like to have your permission to sign that contract. Basically saying, yes, you can give us $1,000.
Yeah, if this is to go towards
It's for the efficiency measures that were installed in the building. By consensus, there you go. Yep. There you go. Every little bit helps, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we ready to move on to highway or other things for Rick?
Nope.
Use that, Eric.
I'm good.
You're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick.
Alrighty, thank you. Have a good rest of your week, and I will be in the neighborhood attending to the minor items to get it all dialed in and, and by then feel free to bring stuff and make it your own.
Perfect.
Alright, have a good evening.
Yep.
Good night.
Eric, you're up.
Okay. Not much for you. This winter is not very fun. We've had a lot of trees, a lot of wind. But just working at it. We got the doors, the front door shimmled up this morning, or this today on the new building. Uh, there's a little bit of
When you say shimmled up, you needed to put down some material? Stone or something?
We got more to do. We gotta do a little parking lot. We had a little bit of mud there where we dug out by the northeast corner, but we put some material in there that was fine all summer. I never put anything in there. We didn't get a chance to finish it, but it's a, hopefully a holdup or freeze now. That's about all I got. I went and looked at the one, I did go look at a wood chipper.
Yeah.
I went and looked at one in Manchester. But I imagine it's gone now. It was kind of small anyway. So.
That's about it. Okay, I'm going to go out of order, but we'll stay in this topic. Eric sent an email last month with his work plan, and I just typed it a little tidier. It's same information. I would suggest that this be something that you refer to regularly, just so we can see your progress.
Yep.
And if there are things that need to be changed, it's just a Word document. It's easy to So there, that's what that one was. Check, that's easy. Procurement guidelines for used equipment, which impacts the wood chipper.
We haven't had any response yet from Vermont Local Roads, because I think they were all on vacation last week, so that hasn't gone out to
Oh, to anyone's, yeah. My thought on that was that we would set a budget number, like we said, go try to find a chipper that meets your needs for $25,000. And that, and we'll rewrite the procurement policy to state this, that, you know, a budget will be set, and the road commissioner will look for equipment that meets the requirements, and then if it's within the budget, you know, it, you'll make the decision because you're having to wait for doesn't make sense. And if for some reason, you know, we say $25,000, and you find one for 30, and you want us to think about it, then I would say you would need to come back. So that was my thought. I don't know if other people have other, we don't have any other examples. I think we could make that guidance for the chipper, so you can move forward and then maybe wait and hear what the local roads people say, and then edit the official policy net for next month. And
How are you thinking of wording it, like?
Uh, there would be a separate category that says, you know, when procuring items greater than $10,000 that are used, the select board will set a budget for the item. And, you know, I can write something, and then we can finalize it next month.
That sounds good.
So Gail, if you do get responses between now and whatever it is, we would deal with this. Certainly by February. If you forward them to all of us, then I'll take that language and put it in the procurement review. So if you could put procurement policy on the agenda, so we don't forget, that'd be great. So for now, I would make a motion that we authorize Eric to spend up to $25,000 for used wood chipper under this temporary used equipment guidance.
And so it's on the agenda again, because we authorized them last month to take it out of the equipment, and it's on here because I was asked to put it on to see if you wanted to take it out of ARPA money instead.
Right, and I thought we might hit that on budget.
But do you need to say where the money?
Right, right now.
I don't think we need to
Using capital, or the equipment on highway equipment.
Right, and I did not specify where the money was coming from in my motion, so we can clarify that further on, or if you want to pause and do that and then come back, that's fine.
No, you made a motion, so I guess.
I did make a motion. It has not been seconded. We could pause if we want to. And you have it again on here. Is it called out, or was it in the
It's just in the
Thought that it was in the highway budget?
I just called it out under highway.
Yeah, that's what you meant when you said wood chipper. Okay, I understand.
Wood chipper, where the money's coming.
So funding for wood chipper is a subset.
That was me.
That's fine, and we can shift to that. You had asked, last month, we looked at paying for that out of
Highway.
Highway, the capital, the highway equipment fund. And there was also a goal to try to look at our long term allotment for that and make sure it was making sense. So if I take the chipper out, we can bring the annual expense for this year down to 71.5.
I made copies.
Okay. And I have a copy too. And just, and the numbers are little.
I didn't plug that number into the project yet.
Yeah, I made it known. So this is what happens if I, if I leave it in.
Yep.
But I keep it at 71.5. So like, you're fine. And then all of a sudden, like, there are a couple of years where you're not fine. So that's just what happens.
Yeah.
This is also inflating at two and a half percent a year now. Yeah, which I think we all agreed last time with our inflation currently at five to seven, using 1% was probably ill advised. So if there if you want to take it out, we can do that. We could pay for it through ARPA. We also have a fund balance overage. We could pay for it out of I could raise this. We could go back to what we had last month.
Right. I mean, I think my, my thought around it was that we
In front of me, but
We were trying to reduce, you know, lower the budget, and this would be a way we could bring that number down.
Yeah.
But also be planning to also replace it. And I you know, initially, I did originally wasn't thinking if we had to we didn't have to, wouldn't use ARPA money, but in hindsight, I'm feeling like maybe that is a good use of ARPA money.
If we use ARPA money for it, does it get us further ahead on running? Eventually.
I think it, it just means if we when we already cut a bunch last meeting to make it so it was possible to have Glenny for more, more
Right now, we're like 22, 23 weeks.
Right. I mean, we could
I think I brought you to 25 in that.
Is that what that?
Yeah, because I remember that number was because of this.
Because Eric was in for 30 or
Right.
32.
Yeah. So right now, the number that we're carrying for the equipment fund is 79.6, and this number is 71.5.
Right. So we could put some, you be, you know, Kevin, we could put some money into the extra help
Right.
line and still go down. So I was just trying to get us a little bit closer to
Well, if you look at the revenue.
Yeah.
Recent taxes.
Yep.
Last year was 662 and with the
Sorry, show us which picture.
It's revenues. FY24 revenue, the budget that happened to
Yes.
Before the highway spending cure one.
Yep.
Yes.
Line six is property taxes. It's 660. Last year was 662, now it's 655. According, subtract that 8100 that you just saved in the equipment fund. So just
And then there's the CLR, but that's a whole different
CLA.
Yeah, it was down 77.
Yeah, that's going to hurt. That is
Right.
Separate issue, but
That's a separate issue up here. There's a letter for you to sign, so you can ask for the determination.
Yep. So what would you like to do? How would you like to pay for the wood chipper is the question on the floor right now.
So the 655, 630, after the 80?
No, that's
Before the
That's before you just shaved 8100 off the highway budget. But you also have 38,000 or so
Carryover.
Right.
That can be spent for highway purposes. Other than highway purposes.
So maybe we should utilize that for chicken.
Well.
And is that going to show up on this budget somewhere?
It's going to show up on the town headquarters and report.
Right.
That would, that 30,000 was the
38.
That why that 38,000 was that line item that another, other select boards came up with?
No, that's different. That, if you go back here to the you go back here to FY22, this is the end of year balance.
Yeah.
And it's this number. We ended the number with a balance of 38,462, just what Gail's referring to.
Yeah, because we changed the name of that seal fracking.
Right, that's a, that's a line in the budget. This is a
Different.
This is aerial for, for
Right.
You didn't spend this much money. Well, actually, what happened was you reimbursed the highway budget
Right.
For some of the town garage expenses, and you hadn't, hadn't done that in the last three or four years, so that's why you ended up with
Right.
So we can authorize this 38 So we can authorize this thirty eight thousand dollars because it's remaining in highway. To be spent.
It's a carry forward. We can spend it this year or next year, as long as it's spent for highway purposes.
And you can do that with highway, but you can't do that with.
General.
General.
Yeah. Do you have an opinion or?
Say it's a good way to use the chipper, get the chipper. And then, and then that's. You don't mess with ARPA, you don't mess with the equipment fund.
Yeah.
Women's happy. Then you got a little bit left over to do.
What door paving?
Paving or.
There's a salt and sand shed issue, by the way.
You can use it.
There is?
I think so, just the thought. I I it's a guess, actually. I I don't know, but I'm pretty sure there is.
Yeah, then.
Right. I mean, we're gonna have to spend, right, it's just where we pull the money from and that.
Right, and and how you wanna do it, right? Like, it could all go to the equipment fund. And then all of a sudden, there's thirty eight thousand dollars more and then then it could come out of the equipment fund. It could come out of ARPA or it could come direct out of there.
Right. Well, I think if.
I don't know if. I'd have to check that you could actually put it in the equipment fund without voter approval.
Oh, okay.
And you can spend it for, use it for highway expenses, but it won't use it for those funds. I would have to check on that.
Okay, good point.
You're gonna have voters do it, but.
But it could be used to just buy a piece of equipment, like a chipper specifically.
So what you wanna do?
That's all I would.
Yeah, I think that makes, that makes the most sense.
I think that should be a motion.
I make a motion that we. That we use um. Twenty five thousand dollars out of the highway balance. To go towards a wood chipper.
Can I amend that to say up to?
Up to, yes.
Thank you. I second that. More discussion on favor? That went round and round, sorry about that. Okay, so now I think my motion, which is waiting for a second. Which is that we give Eric uh general guidance on how to purchase a piece of used equipment. To spend up to twenty five thousand dollars to buy a used wood chipper. With the funding coming out of the year and bounce from FY twenty two.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion? On favor? Okay, look at that. Now we're on to the highway budget. Which we have sort of touched on already.
One quick question.
Yes.
What I've found is there's a place in the answer, there's two places in the picture. One place has one chipper, the other side says more than. And it's the closest place other than Manchester, Vermont. Would the select board feel comfortable sending me with a check? And I can fill the money in. Is that doable or am I gonna have to go back twice? You tell me, I'm just asking. I'm more than happy if Kevin.
How have we ever done this before? Yeah.
You got.
Have we done this before? Bought a piece of used equipment and we don't have a credit card.
When we bought the grader. Actually, we bid on the grader and we won the bid, so.
Then when you went to get it, yeah.
And the other stuff, we bought equipment from.
We usually get a bill.
Right, from sur- central surplus, we got a back open then, so that, you know, we knew what the price was going, so we took a check.
As the treasurer, do you have any good ideas about how to answer his question? It's a long drive. You find what you want, come back, get a check, go back, pick it up.
Unless you can pay them when you pick it up.
I'm fine.
Right, that's what he's asking.
Oh, can you go?
Can he take a blank check though?
Right.
Right, that's the problem.
Yeah, I know.
I guess if he abuses a Bridget privilege, he would never get another blank.
He uses, if he goes to Tahiti, we'll never see him again.
This twenty five grand is not like it's gonna get him too far. And I'm fine with going. So.
It's just new. It's not that we don't trust you, it's just.
No, that's why. Boots on the ground guys going, alright.
There you go, right. You do need to take our tax ID certificate, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
If you're in New Hampshire, you don't worry about it.
Oh, there you go.
Kevin, did you say you'd be?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm going over.
Oh, I like that.
Yeah, that feels better.
Road trip.
I still want to do it twice.
No, I guess not.
Well, I guess there's also like New Hampshire, like Claremont or New Hampshire, like.
Yeah. New Hampshire, it's like southern border over toward Manchester, I think. It's like Brookline.
Or dairy area.
The Brookline and one of them's Hollis, New Hampshire.
Yeah.
They're right there's, there's, like I said, one guy has several. And then another is a tree company who has one. I think his price is kinda high, but I wanna look at it. Or as many hours as on it.
Would you like a motion for that?
Yes.
He wants twenty one, but it's a, it's a good sized chipper.
I don't know, that's why.
I mean, I would, I would make a motion that uh. Kevin and Eric can go with a blank check. To.
Montreal.
Look for a wood chipper up to twenty five thousand dollars.
Okay.
I'll second it. On favor?
I. Bye.
You might wanna abstain, just a thought. Not that I don't trust you. Okay, highway budget. Good question, Eric. I was interested, Gail, in line thirteen in highway. The property and liability insurance compared to our town property and liability insurance. Just surprised me.
Think the highway has a half million dollars.
Yeah, but that's what I mean. Why is the town so big? Let me, okay, so highway is. Right. And what are we insuring? This building?
The buildings.
When you say buildings, so this building?
Yeah, and old. Firehouse, the creamery.
Old firehouse.
Thousand bucks, they're, they're not insured for much.
Yep. Yeah, it just, I don't know, my house is a lot less than that and. I mean, I only have one house, but, you know.
But the. The creamery is insured for public occupancy, correct?
The creamery?
The old creamery, do we carry the insurance?
I mean.
Yes.
Just, I think it's fire.
And and this is.
There's liability on everyone.
I thought your insurance. Went up when it became a public access building like the warehouse.
Our insurance company covers liability on it, even though the school occupies the school. The liability insurance runs with the town as well.
Okay, that was just a question.
I will find the bill and send you your copy.
So we were on equipment fund allocation previously. Do we want to adjust that number from seventy nine six to a different number?
Yes.
Seventy one five, which is with the two and a half percent interest and no chipper.
Yeah.
That's it. And I. Yeah, that's what this one is.
Yeah.
And I, there are a couple of things I just, like, right there, that's confusing. I made a few little adjustments, but the numbers are just the same. Okay. The other number, there are other questions on highway?
Uh, last year with the Potters Brook Culvert, didn't we have a little asterix that went with this number? So people who saw it would. Know to look for information about it. If they don't know how the fifty four thousand dollars.
Were what?
Or how it's.
Is this one of those awkward things where we got the revenue the year before?
Well, this is where we were, we took eighteen thousand, we voted eighteen thousand.
Right.
Fund. Balance to cover part of that share.
But there was also a grant, right?
Yes.
Is that this?
We haven't got the grant, the grant money is coming for sure.
Right. So that might be a good asterisk.
Just so people know.
A question on that bond payment, is that the same payment every year for twenty years?
I believe so.
It seems like we could put that exact number in the budget then. Two oh four two one. And we talked about roadside mowing. Last time, were we going to make a change to that? Keep it the way it is. I happened to see Dan Aller today and he indicated he would be happy to mow it again and he thought he could do it for ten thousand. Uh, depending on the price of diesel. I said, that's a pretty good call out. I think we also talked about you were gonna look for a mower.
Yeah, I haven't heard back from Jeff's lady.
I think if we change it to ten.
Yeah, I'll look into it, but definitely keep it on the table, but as for now, I think you probably shouldn't do that then.
Yeah, it was at ten five, so let's put it to ten. Yeah, I think we all agree on that.
Recovered at least.
Yep. Um, you had asked Kevin about what I believe is on line thirty nine in uh. Expenses, the line is for the highway reserve fund. Which we've been budgeting five thousand a year. And there's. What's that?
You get that out, you're gonna put it back next year and it's going up automatically.
Right, so the question for the board is, is this, you know, this is something that was created. Seven years ago, might be wrong about that.
Right.
We can tell by looking at what the balances.
So this is where that thirty thousand came from?
Yes. Uh, I'm looking. The, the special fund.
This is a special fund. The highway reserve is a special fund.
Right.
Thirty five thousand.
Yeah.
Right, I'm looking for that here.
It's not, it's not part of the, it's end of year fund balance.
It's the capital paving and road construction reserve fund. That correct?
Yes.
Balance is uh thirty thousand eighty dollars and fifty five cents.
And you said last month to take it out and I forgot.
Well, I, I just wanted to revisit it because we didn't quite, I'm not sure that we quite figured that out. And if we do that, what would you like to do with the thirty thousand that's sitting there? Was this created by the voters?
We were gonna. We were.
If you don't use it for highway construction project, you have to go back to voters and.
Yeah.
We were gonna make an, we were gonna have them vote on putting it towards the salt and sand shed.
Yeah.
Was what I thought we talked about.
Okay. So that will be added to the warning?
That, that I'm, I'm, I'd like to know Gail's thoughts on this.
It was created for a reason. It was been something else you asked voters approval and.
Has it been used for anything?
It hasn't been used, only because usually highway construction projects, reconstruction projects are pretty big.
Right.
And so when that five thousand dollars gets you ten feet.
Right.
So we were just building it up slowly. Until we had something major that we needed work on. There was nothing foreseeable, but we were down.
Or do you wanna put it towards paving or?
Maybe this is a question to get Eric's thoughts on, like. Here's a pot of money.
Where would it be most beneficial?
Well, I don't know what.
How much do you want the salt and sand shed?
Well, yeah, I mean, there's never gonna be that much money.
I think that's a fair statement.
Um, I don't know, given what that Potter's Brook cover cost, if we look at my list and we want to pick that one by Matt Patrice. That'll probably eat. A lot of that. So we can use it in the public project too. You know, that's, that's an old, I haven't got any sizing, I just wanted a blessing to.
Yep.
You're gonna have to have that size by the river guy and he's probably gonna say it needs to be. Fifteen feet around or something, you know, and then you're gonna go, oh, God, that pipe is thirty thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars.
Right. And what did we use to fund that? I know the eighteen thousand because the culvert got so expensive. Set a structures grant.
Yeah.
And are those still capped out at like thirty?
Uh, not sure. They don't, they haven't come out yet this year, right?
Well, isn't that the grant we're waiting for still on Potter's Brook?
Well, to be reimbursed for.
Reimbursed for that.
Right, after you're done.
You know how much that is?
I think it's like thirty six thousand.
Yeah, it's in the revenues.
So, I mean.
So roughly the same thing relatively.
I mean, we also, we have to make, we also don't have.
We don't have to make a decision.
We can just leave it as is.
Yeah, the only reason you, if you want to move it to something other than road reconstruction or paving. Then we would wanna vote it either at this town meeting or at a future time.
Right.
And either one of those is fine. It's been sitting there for seven years. Or six.
Started at five, every year it's five thousand per inch or something.
Or another thought. And I mean, obviously, I make, the other thought is to maybe a mower.
Um, which isn't paving or road reconstruction, so we'd have to vote.
Right.
You know, you could vote to put it in uh to move it to the um highway equipment fund. You could vote to move it with salt and sand.
Looking at ten grand every single year for. Danny, roughly.
Right, but yes, we would be paying someone to sit on the mower also. Not ten grand.
How, how close are we to having the match we need for salt and sand?
We have the match we need, I don't believe. So I looked this up, by the way, and then our required match is seventy five. And we have a hundred and twenty.
Okay.
Um, currently remaining. But we can't build a salt and sand for three seventy five, no way, not using this whole federal.
And how long do we have until we can, like, how long until it has to be completed?
The bigger question is that it, we move forward in the process and both Gail and I think are still confused and I've asked twice. How far can we go in the process before they're gonna make us pay the money back?
Yeah.
Right, so if we spend a hundred thousand dollars in planning.
Right.
Are they gonna match it if we back out or how far can we go and they'll still continue the match?
Right.
And we are currently at a standstill waiting for uh Gail to get them some additional information. Um, so once, that's sort of the next step.
Yeah.
And.
Potentially, we could have until next town meeting to decide.
We could. Um, one thing, I think I mentioned this to you. One thing that um the state guy mentioned was that a number of towns have written additional grants.
Yeah.
Because you.
Right.
Can't do it.
Yeah.
For that. So we could do that, that means it's another. Two plus years-ish. Um.
We can hang on to bring our.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, is there, what is the timeline for the one we have, we know?
Absolutely, nothing is happening right now. Um, we.
There's no like deadline it has to be.
It was awarded in April, right? We signed the papers in November, December. And we have started the project management process. And after our first half, first half an hour meeting, they requested information and Gail is still picking it up.
So not super fast.
Well, right now it's on us, but it was on the federal UEI system for the first seven or eight or nine months, whatever that was, yeah. So I will, that's a really good question and I don't know the answer.
So not like a number of years.
Sorry, I wasn't being clear. I don't. Sorry, I wasn't being clear, I don't know the answer.
It's okay.
It may be in the.
I bet it is in the grant.
Cause if there's not. You know.
I'm sure it's at least a couple of three years, always soon.
Oh, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
And it didn't sound like any of those other. I think he said they've awarded thirteen and two have built.
Yeah.
And it didn't sound like. The other towns have like given their money back.
Yeah.
Their money, they don't actually have the money.
Well, then if there's not, if we have our, I was, I thought we were not quite at our match.
No, we have the match.
So we have the match.
We have the match and you know, you can.
Not gonna build.
It's not gonna build.
Right.
We gotta come up with more than the match in order for the things to get built or you have to change what you're gonna build.
And we have time for that.
Right, that was actually another question he didn't answer, which is can we build a smaller structure? Than we proposed?
Right.
Can we make that change, are we allowed to make that change? So, all right, I'll ask that again, I'll, I'll ask my friend Scott this question too. Can we change the size? So I think what we came up with was we would like to remove. Line item thirty nine. Or zero that out for this year. And put a reminder. Maybe on our things to do list, so it doesn't get lost. To determine. The use of the capital. I, what is it called, capital paving and road reconstruction reserve fund.
And you're thinking around. I'm forgetting why we wanted to get rid of this line item. Just to lower the budget. Or.
It's really a philosophical question and I'm, I'm not like super attached to any approach other than. Um. You know, we've put this five thousand dollars away for quite a while and we haven't used it.
Right.
Um. So. You know, we put five thousand dollars away for salt and sand shed for about twenty five years and we're only short by about a half a million. It's not a bad approach, it doesn't get you super far.
Right.
Um, and. A penny on the tax rate is now what, seven thousand dollars in taxes, Gail? Is that about right, eight?
Yeah, it's gonna change with this year.
Yeah. So. I used to say. That for every seven thousand dollars you can reduce the budget, you're cutting a penny off the tax rate.
Yep.
So it's. Some.
If you reduce this year.
Right.
Right, and I think. The goal would be ideally to get it at a steady state place that feels. Um. You know, like. You don't, you don't wanna like cut it to skin and bones and then I think what Gail is alluding to is that something comes up. And you have to all of a sudden.
Blown out of the water.
Yeah, right. So. You know, it's a cushion, it's, there's no problem at all keeping it there. Um, we haven't utilized it.
Right.
So. That's a parallel question.
Do you have an opinion, Eric?
I think it should stay.
You think it should stay? Do you have an opinion, Kevin?
I'm fine with this saying.
So then our tax rate doesn't go down as much as. Much as we were hoping, but.
It is lower than. Well, not really, if you take out Potter's Brook.
Yeah.
Take out Potter's Brook.
Right, then it's like five eighty five or something.
It's, it's more, yeah, that, that's really what I was looking at. You know, and this is a year when we're adding in increased fuel costs, you know, a new building. So increased insurance, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
Um, I am fine either way, I would personally take it out, but that absolutely does not mean we need to take it out.
Well, I, yeah, I would say we keep it, assuming as the road commissioner. He wants it in there, seems. We can revisit it next budgeting season. Yeah, we feel about thirty five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
Right. And that, the Patriot Culvert is in the stormwater plan, sorry, I'm not looking at your nice list.
Uh, I'm not sure. It's just on my list. I probably looked at it. I don't like it.
It's rotted, is that?
The one on Gulf.
Right by Matt Patrice.
Oh, Matt, he's, I'm sorry. I think he is.
But it's a. Apparently high traffic road and. If the top doesn't look flat. I think you should definitely. Think about it, put it on our.
Yeah.
Put it on our plate as well, it's a.
Oh, look at that, I totally missed minutes.
It's an old uh, oil if I bet was used. When it got put in. So. And I don't think Hollis ever changed it. From what I, I talked to him, he said, yes.
Right.
It's forty. I've been here seven years, he was here thirty six years, so.
It's been a couple of years.
And so the other thing that probably we should be on the budget. In the budget sometime is that thing over that's on. The channel on North End Road that was put back in the sixties, right? It's going there, it looks good now, but it's something that's gonna be replaced. Potter's Brook.
Right, yeah.
Much bigger.
Yeah, that's the whole project. How do we start?
Structure grant out there.
Right.
So. Well, that's what, they'll pay for, what is it, eighty percent, I think, for your structured grant.
Right.
And can.
But eighty percent, twenty percent of three hundred thousand dollars is still a lot of money if you don't have it.
Right, well, and I wonder if there's any like um. Preparedness grants for like. Weather events coming up, cause that would be a place to be like, this is. Where all our water goes in town, so replacing that culprit to.
Yeah, we could have, definitely get an engineer to look at that thing.
Yeah.
Or somebody, I mean, I think that.
If you have someone come down to look at mass then.
Yeah, just.
They're nearby. So you have the state guy do that, is that how that works?
I don't know, I never had, I mean, the Potter's Brook, it was obvious that. There was a problem. So we didn't really have an engineer look at it, but. I can get Josh, I can probably have Josh come out and look at that.
Yep.
And he, if, you know, he'll know. Who to tell me to call to come and look at it structurally. Then.
And then you have to do a hydro. Hydrologic study, see how much water is actually gonna come down there to determine how big it needs to be.
Yeah, it's a whole, it's like. We're, we're out there always.
Yeah, absolutely.
I just wanna try to get in front of her.
Well, thinking about it is good, cause then, you know, grant deadlines coming up, it's always helpful to know what might come up even in the next two years.
Okay, any other? Uh, comments, suggestions, changes, I think we decided to leave line thirty nine. We're adjusting uh thirty five, which is equipment fund. Um, mowing, we reduced to ten thousand. And the bond payment is twenty thousand four hundred twenty one.
But let me make sure that we got everything and. Something other than zero or.
Okay, you could make it five hundred if it made you feel better.
Just that much more.
Yeah.
It's a budget investment.
Yeah. Um. We jumped right into highway, um. I think. Are there other things you wanna talk about now, the, the revenue side of highway? Um, Gail has plugged in for us. Looks exactly like last year's revenue. Um, and then we'll come back to the general budget, um. In our next section. Okay? Yeah, all right. Are you good, Gil, any questions?
Oh, I have a question for myself, I do that.
Did you talk to Phil? And find out if he's good for Sander, if he got this.
Thirty six thousand in highway bridges.
Good.
In revenue?
In revenue.
Yeah. Uh, is. That's a, okay. That's a structures grant we hope to get in the future. So you know what's interesting in revenue, it says FY.
I, I just copied and pasted one line to the next.
Yeah, I.
And I didn't change the header.
Three to four, yeah.
And the expenditures I did and the revenue is different.
Okay. Okay, um, anything else for Eric or highway?
You're saying that that thirty six thousand is. That's not correct, that is supposed to be a zero.
Unless we don't get it till after next year, but we showed it as revenue for this year. Um, that, uh.
So that's gonna affect the tax dollars.
Right. Yeah.
Cause we don't know when that reimbursement will come through for.
Yeah.
But we don't. Yeah, we can't guarantee it will come through.
The paving money, did we not, have we not gotten that yet also? Oh, my goodness. Yeah. Okay, moving on.
Question about that, though.
Yeah.
If we have both the paving money, sorry.
Sorry that. Paving grant is not in the revenue showing up in the revenue.
And so if we have both of those grants come through. Next year. Does that mean we suddenly have? Well, not this, this like starting July.
I'll make sure you get them before.
Let's just say we have a year.
With that already, and it was not.
Right.
Yeah, we showed like negative fifty three thousand dollars because we hadn't gotten paid for.
And by doing it this way, we're avoiding that. By not putting it in as revenue until it actually comes in as revenue.
When we did the twenty three. Um, budget, we didn't know we were getting a hundred thousand dollar paving.
Right, right.
Or two hundred thousand dollar paving grant. But it didn't give me.
Right, if, if you look at our current financials. It looks bad.
Yeah.
But you'll see, you know, it was a big expenditure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, onward to financials.
And I just interrupted here and.
Yes.
I think Kyle and. Well, and I'm being very patient. And I think they might be here for just one. Agenda item, I didn't want them to want to bump them.
Sure, Kyle, are you here now? Um.
And you should know, David and Nancy are doing this as well.
Yeah, I'm here, I'm here, I'm here.
Okay, uh, there was just a question, if you would like us to take up. Uh, and that, we have a really big agenda and if you're waiting for a certain item, we're happy to. Move it uh forward if that would be helpful to you.
No, I'm here just to listen, you guys do your thing.
Okay. Uh, we're on financial. Current year, which is after the budget paperwork. I know.
Go home if you're done. I got up a long time.
Yeah. Um.
And so it's. This is in November thirty, I haven't had December.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Um. So I had great hopes that Eric and I were gonna do that stormwater piece, we, we haven't done the to do list. And that's on there, the stormwater paperwork, so you and I are gonna make a commitment to do that before we meet.
And then let, let me know, um.
When you're going shopping.
Yeah, I'll see if I can set something up for. Sometime. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um. So we're, uh. So I just made a note here about that highway overage, which. I find it confusing that we don't, we see that anywhere. So we've talked about that, any uh comments or questions on revenues? Yeah, I had just circled the paving grant status, but that does look bad, negative one hundred seventy five thousand five hundred eighty one. We got an update on that. I did not have any other. Questions.
The Wallenford puts their carry forward in their expenditure line.
Um.
You want me to do that?
So in their expenditure line as like number one, carryover? Yeah. I would.
Yeah.
I would like that, but.
Yeah, that would actually be helpful.
I mean, the trick is, like, Gail can do it on our current year budget.
Right.
But you can't budget for it.
Right.
Until.
It's actually.
The year ends and you know what it is.
Right.
And.
But it would be very helpful to see it.
Yeah.
I mean, just cause I, I never remember it exists and or what it is.
Right.
Which I know I could keep going through and I.
It's typically, it's not thirty eight thousand dollars.
Right, it's five hundred ten.
Right, so in the past, it just sat around in the. General fund in the checking account, because that's where it sat until it got big enough and we transferred it to. The equipment fund or the capital foundation.
Well, and I think. This is a topic for another day, but. We stopped budgeting for delinquent taxes.
Right.
And that is part of why we have seen carryovers.
Right.
Not for highway.
Not for highway.
Highway, you had a carryover last year for highway, because you actually reimbursed the highway expenses for the town garage. When the capital fund. That's why you have carried.
Right.
Right.
Right, so we could just not do that. And then, you know. The town garage would cost less, come from a different thought.
It's total what you're gonna spend for, it's gonna be. What it's gonna be spent for, whether it comes out of the capital. Whether it comes out of the highway fund, there is gonna be a total spent of.
Yes, and that is what we are seeing tracked.
Yeah.
Here. Other questions on current month, uh, well, almost current month, November thirtieth financials. If not, let's move along. Warranted orders, questions or concerns? Are these payrolls I didn't sign?
No, you signed it after that, it's just I make a profit every week. And you don't come in every week to sign them. The ones for the auditors you look at are some.
Okay, I did, I did sign them. Ready to move on?
Yeah.
Okay, draft number four, FY twenty four, general budget for. The town.
Giving it up.
Sorry?
Giving it up.
It went up, yes it did.
Not a payroll stuff in there, you're adding the kind for. The bookkeeper account office assistant.
Questions? Comments?
Um. The uh. Twenty four thousand seven seventy five or budgeting for law enforcement, is that some? Thing that I should inquire with David whether or not we're getting our. Um.
Plan?
Time put in?
Right, this is ten hours a week for fifty two weeks.[1758.58]
We get billed on whatever they actually spend.
And some weeks are more, and some weeks are less, I think we were a little short in last year's budget, I think he's having trouble staffing, so we may not be getting. Ten hours a week, we budget for it in case we have to pay for it.
Correct.
I think one of the things the speed study committee is supposed to do is look at whether we need more enforcement. Or we just need more targeted enforcement, so.
Right.
I don't know if the county sheriff has any capacity to add. One. Any more time for us.
Well, I, I'm not, I, I am not clear at all what the county sheriff is doing, and there was a moment in time where we got a monthly report.
Right.
I would love to get a report, doesn't have to be monthly.
I will send you the link, you have to go look at it yourself, and I don't send it.
Uh. Um. But I do not know what the current guidance is to our sheriff's deputy, I think at one point there was a, go get speeders! Then there were a lot of complaints and there were, uh, give people warnings, I'm not really sure what the guidance is these days. Um, I am happy to defer to the speed study committee on.
Well, can you?
How did?
Can you actually send that to me again?
I'm gonna send it for the whole.
Yeah. Do you wanna have it on bottom of every agenda, so every time you open the agenda, you'll say, oh, I should go look at that. I did not know there was such a thing.
Yeah, no, that might be my idea, I'll forget.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, no, I just wanna find out where we're at with that, of course, I could just text Justin and ask him.
Yes.
So the warrants were approved?
Yes, sorry, approved the warrants by consensus?
Yep.
Yes. Um. Any adjustments to the? General budget?
No, I mean, things just kind of went up incrementally and appropriately where they needed to go.
Yeah, I think it is mostly our staffing.
Yeah.
And the solid waste, howling went up and. Processing them up. And our stuff is going to wheel operator, by the way. Wheel operator, which is in Adirondack, in Hudson Falls.
You said that as if it were a continuation of a previous conversation, and I do not recall a previous conversation.
Twenty years ago, we had a contract with Hubbard's to take our stuff to Adirondack.
Yep.
In Hudson Falls, we used to get weight slips and stuff from them, and at some point we stopped getting weight slips, so I haven't been sure that it's actually been going there for the last ten or fifteen years. And I didn't wanna ask, I didn't wanna know what Hubbard's was doing with this.
Yeah.
But it turns out that we have been paying the tax of six dollars a ton.
Right.
The last twenty years. And it turns out that Hubbard's has been paying that same tax.
Right.
And so when I raise a little stink with the. Tax department, which had to have Eric vacation from Hubbard's if they were actually paying it, and Hubbard's had said, the state insisted they had to pay on everything that went through their facility.
Yeah.
Um. And so I said, well, I don't know if I wanna ask this or not, to sue, but where's our stuff going, and she said, still going to Hudson Falls, but it's. There was originally, there was a wheel operator in New Hampshire, that our stuff went over there when we were part of Rutland County's solid waste visitor. Not part of them. Wheel operators thirty years ago or forty years ago.
Long time.
Um, so from the tax department, I hear that. We can only go back and ask for a refund for three years.
But I support you in doing that.
Right.
Thank you.
Just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good job figuring it that out. We just kept paying it for the next ten years.
Well, we got a refund a number of years ago, because from the first institute that we paid it, and it turned out nobody else did, and so they didn't have all their money back. And then just everybody started, they started collecting from everybody, so we paid it again.
Yeah.
And I guess we shouldn't have it. Anyways.
Okay, uh, have we approved the, uh, general budget by consensus?
I will, yeah, I, I, I agree that this is approvable.
Are you good with that? Okay, um, remind me to hit the minutes after we do the next one, FY twenty-two, end of year fund balance, general and highway, which we have touched upon. So, uh, we talked about how the highway is thirty-eight and change, I wrote the number down. And the general. We flip back here. So the highway is thirty-eight, four sixty-two, and the general. Must be on a different page. General, it's the unencumbered balance, is that correct? Unlike the, on the one that starts with property map, it's on this, this one, has property mapping at the top. And at the bottom, you see encumbrages and checking count. And so then you see as of six thirty twenty-two, our unencumbered balance was sixty-seven, seven oh seven. And Gail has a note, use for cash flow or vote to use for a question mark, and know how we didn't get that hundred seventy-five thousand dollars in grant money yet? Um, it does make sense to keep some of that money unallocated for cash flow.
Yeah.
And I think last year, the year before, I asked Dan, you know, what do other towns do, and he suggested ten to twenty percent of the town budget. Which would be, uh, the town budget is.
The whole town budget?
No, he meant just the town.
Just general.
Two hundred and, maybe it's three hundred.
You would have, I think you would have to do. The highway, then the town.
Ten percent of the whole, well, then we don't have enough for cash flow. Right, there you go.
Well, and I can tell you that that eighty-five thousand for the reappraisal fund is gonna go away pretty soon.
Yeah.
Because we are gonna be under order to do a reappraisal, because our CLA is below eighty-five and our COB is above one.
Yes, but we're not on that one yet.
No, but I'd be saying that eighty-five.
Yeah, which has been, yeah.
Yeah.
Loading us.
We're gonna suck up most of that and we do a reappraisal.
Yeah, so we can't do the reappraisal until we get the paving grant reimbursement.
So I'm hearing.
Went out with an RPF for twenty point six, so it might be that we can't.
Oh, my gosh.
Appraiser for another.
Oh, well. I'm hearing that we, because of how much. How much money we're waiting to be reimbursed for, we need to have this in our cash flow.
I think, I think.
So, I would. I would suggest that we just keep it all in cash flow.
Yeah, and the thirty-eight, we're gonna add to the. Monthly budgeting. So we can see it.
And we spent.
Twenty-five of it.
Twenty-five.
Just like that.
Hmm.
Right.
Up to.
Anything else on this item? I apologize for skipping the minutes, I would like to go back to those, so we have two sets of minutes from December eight and December fourteen. On December fourteen, which is the one that comes up first in our packet, under the tap grant, there is one typo. I believe, may have to start over. Um, does anyone have any other? Have? Um, anyone have any other adjustments or comments about those meeting minutes?
No, I would move to. Prove them.
One second, that. Okay, right, good, I, okay, we'll move on, or we'll move back to December eight, um, I have. A correction, and I'm not sure if a correction is appropriate, but, cause I think I, what I said was wrong, but this is the, um, at the bottom of the first page. The town will, for the tap grant, which is the salt and sand, the town will need to provide a hundred thousand dollar match, and I, as I mentioned earlier, I looked it up and it's seventy-five. So.
Well, I think you said a hundred here.
And then I. I said a hundred twenty-five another time, now, now I'm saying seven, and I'm just telling you that the right number is seventy-five. So you could put a little asterisk there that said, later we learn, um, but that is the correct number. Any other?
No.
Additions, corrections, you know?
I'll make a motion to accept that, man.
Second, that, all favor, okay, sorry, now we're on to old business prep for info meeting for revote of the right-of-way volunteers needed to set up and clean up the community center, so that meeting is Thursday, the twelfth, at. Six thirty. Um, I don't. I think we need to have the owl there. Uh, did you, how did you do the last info meeting, just if, I'm thinking if people wanna attend remotely.
recorded, but we also couldn't get the screen on the wall to work.
Right. Cause it really needs to be like a.
I have to check with Maureen, well, it worked the first time that we did it. It hasn't worked. So I don't know if we need to take this, we just have a little one that's on the rat table, so owl will connect to this, it just won't see everybody live on the wall.
What were you, were you using her projector, or you were using something else?
Yeah, um.
Zach?
Zach came and connected everything up and just, you turn the lights down, you could barely make people out and turn the lights up so that the owl could see people and you couldn't see on the wall.
I think what, uh, what would work would be a, like. A big screen like this, but like the school also has like a big. Big screen, um. Something like that, if we were gonna keep doing bigger meetings.
But we can test it for this one, but we have another one coming up in March.
Right, but we don't have, we don't, you know, we could ask the school if we could use that one, but.
Right.
I think using this.
So what's the meeting, I have a seventeen?
That's a vote.
That's the vote, we have to count that one after.
Right.
And can you move the E and I meeting seven thirty to eight thirty?
Yes.
It should be done counting ballots by then.
Yeah.
Shouldn't be too difficult.
So. It's usually part virtual, so do you wanna have, move the meeting to the community center and have it there?
Yeah.
Or do we do everything back down here and set it up and have it done?
Well, why don't we just do it there?
And everything's already gonna be there.
Everything, yeah, so.
And then do you want us to, will you stay for the meeting, and you want us to pack it up and bring it back down here?
No.
Just making sure, in case we're. Need to be somewhere else.
Okay, so, uh. Just wanna highlight that, um, this is a lot of extra work for Gail, doing this election at the busiest time of year, so, uh. I would like to ask my colleagues here if we could all show up early to help set up.
Absolutely.
And anything else we can help you with, Gail, on through this process? Um, what time would you like us to arrive?
It starts at six thirty, six, we should be able to set up fifty chairs, I don't know what more than that many people are gonna come.
And, um, we will all, uh, write on our hands, don't forget to record the meeting. Or somehow we will remember, I don't know how we will remember, but. Um.
I'll remind you.
Sherry will remind us, thank you, Sherry. Let the record reflect, Sherry has taken that on.
I think if I, as long as I log onto here with this one, I can record from it, right now I log on here, it gets recorded onto that computer. But I think if it log on, this one, I can join the meeting, right, so I can record it by law.
Okay. Yeah, I think the person who's running the meeting has to be the, is the only person who can actually record. Right, so if, so you, as the person who logs in, has to hit record.
Right. And Holly Ross is on that, she's the moderator.
Okay.
And so I think the board needs to figure out what it's gonna do for a presentation.
I would like to suggest that, well, there are two things you could do, one is you could do a presentation and let, you know, have questions, and the other is you can just have questions. Um, probably a quick summary of sort of the history and how we got to where we are, and. Um, certainly, I would say there were some mistakes made, and acknowledging those and apologizing would be a good thing. Um. I was not a negotiator, I would like to ask.
Yeah.
Uh, Gail and Meadow slash whoever of the two of you to do that. And maybe the two of you can just. Figure that out, how you wanna handle that, and then, um, you know, we'll answer questions as they come up. And.
Do we have any new information? From last time?
I don't believe so.
No, you just need to, I think, explain to the people that come.
Yeah.
How we got there.
Right. But, but there's no, I just wanted to improve, clarify.
Have any information from whether the bank is gonna approve it or not.
Yeah.
Um, I did create a little map for Bob Lloyd, because he wanted to see where the proposed. Right of way was gonna be. New and Barbara Norton's driveway is where it might be. This is what it looks like, it's going right through the middle there, Meadow.
Yeah.
I mean, the negotiations were, was on here, because it was at that end, and they didn't want anything in the Meadow, so I don't know. I haven't got any sponsors. This is. This is the town office right here.
Right.
This is their house is right here. This is the field, this is Barbara Norton's, her driveway is pretty close to her drive, her property line, and it needed to be this way more. She said her, her driveway was a little bit. It was, she felt it was dangerous, so she thought it should be more this way.
Back up further of the.
To the north.
Yeah, um, Eric put. Ribbon out there for a little while.
Boy, Steve.
I don't know if anybody can see this.
Was for the, that, that's the.
No. So this is the map, if anybody can see it. You know, if you wanna go this way or the other way, the little triangle is a little four point four three acres, and the other little thing going across is going right through the middle of their field. So that's where it is at the moment, but we don't know if the bank's gonna approve that, we don't know if the Strattons are gonna approve it.
Right, but we do know, I guess, then we do know that we have to agree on a location.
Right.
And we know that. We wouldn't give ourselves the driveway permit for.
You may not give yourself a driveway permit, but it's unsafe, no.
It's unsafe. Um. And. This side of the property line between the old creamery and their house.
This is the house.
Okay.
This is here.
This is the initial.
This is the old.
Right, but this.
This was the, down here.
Right, I guess I'm asking a different question.
It was down here, Kevin, now it's up here.
Is there any possibility of going on this side of the property line?
Right through the, right through the driveway.
Well, the creamery is. Five feet from the property line.
Fifteen feet from property line.
Fifteen feet.
Yeah, that's their lawn.
Well, Michael and I had thought that was the side.
That's actually the. If you don't mind an interjection, if you guys put a little more attention into it, you have a parking lot right over there.
Right.
If you work some way of having a foot trail that goes, you know, on one side of the, or the other.
Right.
Literally have the problem solved, because.
There's fifty feet that we need approval from either. List or the Strattons.
That becomes a much, much less inclusive on everyone's part, on everyone involved gets.
Agree, we've been trying to get that for.
What?
Many years. But you're absolutely right, that is another alternative that may or may not be possible.
So, and I don't, the last time I looked it up, I don't know if it's still the same, but the last time I looked it up, the state said a walking trail had to be. No less than a hundred feet long and ten feet wide, if I could, one feet wide, a hundred feet long.
I know nothing about walking.
See.
You can, you can. No, we're just, we're asking for a right of, a walking right of way.
They had nothing to do with that.
I agree, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but.
Or where, ran into that when they were putting their walking trail in from their parking lot to the, to the, um. To the, uh, rest area down there.
I, I think that you, I, I would be hard pressed to see where if you bought a right-of-way, even if you bought a forty-five foot right of way, I mean, the, the rich trail is, you know, a very narrow right-of-way.
Right.
Ten feet.
You can, you can, they, you could tailor that down to a handicap walking path, you know, for wheelchair acceptable people. Right down on the other side of the creamery and, you know, you can make whatever you want.
I was, right, but I was somebody that was dealing in that.
That's a really different scenario, and there's probably other landowners considerations, but here, you, you own property, I mean, you're literally a hop, skip and a jump, and then you get rid of the entire. You get rid of the neighbors, you get rid of everything going on.
Okay, I wanna stop us right here, this is good conversation, but.
My question was, was just if there was enough footage there, and that's not helpful for the meeting planning at all. I was just, I was.
So this meeting is about whether voters. So this meeting is about whether voters are gonna share, yes or no to keep it the way it is. And the voters, they don't have a hundred and nineteen voters vote yes. Then it'll stay the way it is. And then we proceed to talk with the Stratons and the bank.
Yeah.
Tell me again why it's a hundred and nineteen voters.
Because a hundred and seventy-eight voted yes. The prevailing side, you have to have two thirds of the prevailing side.
To override. I'm trying to figure out what that was. Okay. So a map would be really helpful. And yeah, either a handout or if there's a way to make it bigger, just so everyone knows what we're talking about.
The other one was for the first meeting. Do you want it bigger than this one still? Or is this one okay with the different line numbers?
Yeah, the other thing that if you can figure out, if you send it to me, I'll do it, is to post a PDF of this in the chat for the meeting, then anyone at home can click on that and see it on their computer rather than are trying to
Hold it up.
Do that, which is hard. Um. So.
Right. So the, the new information we have is, is addressing some of the concerns about that Hollis had at the last meeting, which is that we won't be putting it in a location that would not be approvable for a permit. Otherwise, otherwise it's all the same.
Right.
Eric even said that.
Right, just trying to reiterate what's what we have different to talk about.
Right. Are we ready to move on to stuff to do track follow up?
Yes.
Okay. Um so we're all, we're all gonna meet at six o'clock uh next Thursday, the twelfth to set up. And Gail, thank you for all the work you've been doing uh from porch forum and I assume tails and maybe a quick reminder next week as well. The sign, I think, you know, goal is to get the word out so as many people know.
I got my ballots today.
People got their ballots, yeah.
The sign is out there.
That's what I mean. You did the sign. No, I'm complimenting you on all.
Wait, do the sign.
No, do front porch forum again, just to remind people. Um.
We've gotten two ballots back, not many. Try to encourage people to go to the meeting on the twelfth, get their questions answered.
Yep. Okay, we're moving on to follow up list review. Um so um the number five I mentioned, um you know, we were, we said, we don't have to go out to bid for engineering again, right? We already did it. And they're like, you have to prove that you followed blah, 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 blah. So Gail is um working on that. And so that's an update and.
Got all the stuff for this life.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I did reach out to, and you know, if you happen to find it, Gail, I have a pretty strong memory of Dave Birdsall presenting to us the plan that Pittsburgh used for their salt and sand. And he got it, I believe, from Stu at Vermont Local Roads. And I looked everywhere and couldn't find it. So I asked Dave for it again. He can find it in his email.
It was on here.
He's on here. There you go. So Dave, if you find that, shoot that over. I think that was, you know, when we did that, it was twenty twenty and it was a year or two old then. So
Right.
You know, the numbers are somewhat meaningless, but my remember, my memory was that it was about four hundred grand for about what we're building then.
Right.
So that's where I'm coming from when I say I don't really think we have enough money. Um work try, work plan for ash removal is spring, um highway equipment fund list. Uh I will clean up the one that uh, the last one that I did, which was to pull out the wood chipper and raise, and I'll send that over. So we all have it. Gail, you had been asked for the spring road maintenance practice slash policy, and I know you've been looking for this.
I haven't done anything on it because I got not much of a response at the beginning.
Right.
There's been more pressing issues, so that's.
Yes. So we will just keep this here and uh acknowledge that uh it is a work in progress. Um Old Town Garage, that's just a note. Um there's some transfer station notes that Eric had put in last time. Uh Dave and Meadow are gonna work on the shade tree policy and the tree plan. There you go.
There's a February date in there.
There is.
I think it was twenty-two and I changed it to twenty-three.
Three.
Um the roadside right of way wood policy is another one that, Gail, you had been asked.
And you do an injunction before you start.
Yeah, and like I know um this lot that they did a lot of cutting on was for sale. I don't know if it's still for sale. I don't know if it sold, but there's a lot of wood there.
It didn't sell. Then at one point I thought the owner wanted the bits, but I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I don't know if anybody, I don't know, I don't think I had a contact.
Yeah. So I think uh clarifying that policy would be helpful. Um traffic study, Kevin's gonna leave that off next month. The general uh also on Gail's list is the continuing of operations plan. Um the auditor recommendations, we have this also under, oh, that's the next one. Do you wanna do this now? Let's skip this and we'll zip through the rest of the list and then come back.
Great.
Um the tech plan, um any update from Zach?
I did not.
If you were going to call him.
Oh, well, I need to call him about next Thursday.
Okay, I have an additional question, which is um we need to find someone else to be our support person for our website. And I recently got a notice that I'm gonna get a bill, which currently I'm paying on my credit card automatically. So I need to change that one um for the domain name and the whole GoDaddy account, which is what hosts us is in the town's name, but it's through me. So there's a certificate that's up for renewal, which is the SSL, which I believe has to do with secure purchasing. And we don't purchase anything, but our website just had so many like, warning, warning, this is dangerous, warning, warning, this is dangerous. That we bought the SSL and it's up for renewal and it's a hundred bucks a year, which seems kind of like a lot. And so I would love for you to just ask Zach, number one, if he's a website guy, if he'd be willing to just be our support person. Um you know, we do updates, but when something like this comes up, I used to call Guillaume.
Yep.
And now I think we should find someone new. Guillaume has a new job and he's really good. So um we do have some money to pay someone if, um you know, we have a dedicated website account. Um so if you could inquire if that is something Zach would be willing to do, I did ask Guillaume about that SSL thing. But we also need to just figure out how to get that whole transaction on, in the town's name, not in my personal name, not on my personal credit card. Um I do have a note to talk about a town credit card further down the list. Um the Mill River um agreement. Have we heard back from the very nice insurance lady? Okay.
But with the holidays, you know, people have taken, a lot of people took between Christmas and New Year's off, so.
Yes. So yes, just ping her would be good. Um town building, maintenance and repair were there? And I wasn't quite sure where you were on some of this stuff, Gail. I if there are any changes, let me know.
Have you heard anything about that, Brent? And when are we gonna hear about the?
I haven't heard a thing. I'll look it up.
Yeah, the handrails got replaced, but the paint was in progress.
Still in progress.
Yeah.
Springs. Um and the creamery, it's, that's just a note. I think you just brought it up when I was taking notes. And then there were a couple of things at the old firehouse. And then seven and eight, I think are aspirational. Um Gail had the idea, which I think is a really good one to like have a list of like, here's what we're all, we're gonna talk about every January. And there are a whole bunch of things that don't necessarily come up. And so if we plan for them
Yeah.
annually, then yeah, did we uh, we have not talked at all about health insurance coverage and options. Are we good with the numbers that we have? And we're fine. We're sticking with what we have.
Sticking with what we have. Didn't seem to do that much of an increase from.
Great. Yep. Um.
Contrary to what the original, then started out saying in September.
I don't know. Mine went way up. So lucky town. All right, any adjustments here? This is something I have been updating. Um.
Can you send it as a doc, like a
I think it, was it a patch to the email?
I don't remember if it was editable or not, but I'll, I'll double.
Oh, it's a Word doc.
Yeah.
I can send it again if you want.
No, I'm pretty sure it was.
It's just.
As an attachment. But I do think it's good process just to
But I do.
Zip through that.
If we're going to take action on this, we're gonna put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
Yes, I agree. I think it should be on the agenda every month.
Is enough notice.
So I see what you mean.
If you're gonna take action on it, we did that a couple of meetings ago. There was something on here and we took action on it that wasn't actually, the list was on the to-do list was on the agenda, but not the what we were, what you made a decision about.
So you're.
The chair, probably you should look at it ahead of time and say, well, this might, we might need to do something on this, so you really pull it off of there.
Or if we're doing it where it's set up, where we know what month, oh, it's August, we need to make sure we're talking about job descriptions and salary range adjustments, or whenever that would be appropriate. Then we would know when to have it on.
If you look at it and say, oh, we need to talk about this, put it on next month's agenda.
Right, well, and like just the example of what I did talk about, which was the tech plan and the website and, you know, we need to do some research. We're not gonna make a decision yet. We'll put it on the agenda for next month. Hopefully there'll be some information and.
And then we can make it on the agenda.
Yeah, I don't see any of these as critical, but.
And we could always, if we want to take action, put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Exactly.
Since most of these are not.
Yeah. Um, what are we doing for time? Seven forty-two. Review draft financial policies requested by auditors, cash receipt, petty cash, return check policy, accounting, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I read through these and had a couple uh things I had questions about. Um my question for the two of you is if this is something you're ready to take action on, did you get to read it? Um do you have questions for Gail as treasurer?
Who?
This is, this is a draft that
Yeah.
Someone gave us.
Okay.
And I modified it for.
For ten minutes, yeah.
Yep. There were a couple of things um.
Proceeding this, there was a bunch of questions from the LCT.
Right.
About, you know, think about.
How we're redoing.
Right, yeah, right.
From what I, when I said before.
Yeah, and.
Captain, where I pulled these out. So these were two that we could look at.
Yep.
Yep, must have been, I don't remember joining, putting up the new, one question I had was on receipts. I didn't know if you used a three-part prenumbered receipt or some other receipt or reporting system acceptable to the treasurer.
You do.
Um.
That's why it's in brackets.
Yeah. Um.
One reason for that, but.
Yeah.
But there may be a different treasurer for me at some point in the future, so.
Well, and so I think, you know, documenting what our process is and making sure we're all familiar with it and agree that it's a good process is good practice. I mean, now if you receive funds, do you give a receipt?
Yeah. What, if somebody gives me cash, they can lose it. If they pay taxes, get a receipt. I mean, if it's budget, you don't give receipts to the attorneys that sent a check for recording.
Yeah, I mean, basically is what you do now.
Yes.
Right.
A lot, a lot of these policies are what I do now. It's just it's not written as.
It's not formalized. It's true, exactly.
Yeah, no, I'm good with this.
Yeah, so I mean, you put some of this in brackets, I would be fine taking the rest of that out, which maybe that was your intention. I don't know. One thing, one other question I had on preparing and depositing funds. When they're talking about funds, I think funds means any funds, right? Like checks.
Checks.
And it says that uh funds collected by the authorized persons totaling five hundred more must be deposited with the treasurer no later than the following business day. Does that mean if someone besides the treasurer collected them?
Yeah.
Does that ever happen?
Not usually.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. It's hard to have that.
Yeah.
Or the town, if the town's where.
And I, and I picked that five hundred dollar number because it was a blank there.
Mm-hmm, right.
And so you're gonna have somebody do it.
Do we need to put a number in there?
Yeah.
Or can it just be like all funds?
No later than the first business day the following week and no, I'm not gonna run to the bank.
Well, that's why I started with it. It was very clear to me. You were not gonna run to the bank every day. It's not like you're in a little village and you can just walk down the street. So um yeah. So I, I just read these and felt like some of them would be perhaps uh not applicable to you and was surprised that I would appreciate your editing them.
Yeah.
To meet the needs, yeah.
One one sphere. That I have to go, I've put in something about the community fund.
Yeah, yes, you did that under um.
Proper paying or oh, a funders.
To the third.
Paying.
Yeah.
The exception to this is the community fund and we continue to get it. Because it can't be made after the town.
Right, right.
It needs to be made out of.
And that's the only example of that, is that correct?
Yes, because the fish and wildlife gets made after the town, we deposit that and then they take them on that.
Okay. Um I had.
As I tell people to make it up to cash. I laugh and they don't.
Yeah.
Thankfully.
Yeah.
I would make everybody make checks out, payable to town.
Yeah, and I didn't know on the next page if you actually, you must have some petty cash.
I don't know.
None.
You don't, so we don't do a petty cash thing.
So you could just say petty cash. The town of Tinmouth does not carry petty cash, and then you can erase the rest.
Well, except that petty cash is for instance, we had to have two hundred and forty dollars worth of stamps to mail the ballots. I went to the post office, wrote the check, came back here and got reimbursed for that petty cash. It's, I'm spending my money.
You had. Right, that's a reimbursement.
We would take the money out and put the receipt in.
Right.
So somebody after me is probably not gonna be as willing to do that, so she probably had it in writing with this.
Yeah, good.
Or if we are gonna end up with a card.
And you gotta have.
Right.
All the stuff controls about hundred, I don't know if that's in here.
I didn't see it.
It might be in one of the other.
Yeah, the same uh kind of question on return checks. There was just a place there, insert an amount um that we would charge if someone's checked bounced.
Usually I'm charging the bank fee, which is fifteen dollars.
Right, it says in there that.
Plus an additional amount to cover the town's expenses arising from handling the return check. Just one more thing, right?
People are taxpayers and you know, whack them once, then whack them again.
Yep. So um if you wanted to read through that, and I, I think this could be for our February meeting. That looks like a good policy to me.
Yeah, I'm curious just in the preparing and depositing funds. Do we need to have a dollar amount? Or could it just say funds collected must be deposited with the treasurer no later than the following business day?
Yeah, I think it should say all funds collected. There's a half, yeah.
I mean, I guess you're saying less than.
The only other thing could be like the plant sale checks definitely sit around for more than one business day before we get them to you.
I see what you're saying. So funds collected.
Right, and they're not made out to the town, but they're made out to named accounts that are town accounts.
Right.
So that would be uh and situation where uh Gail would not actually like us to be bringing her checks every day for the ten days or whatever it is.
Yes.
Yes.
All at once.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, we could put a sentence in there that. I mean, we could put a sentence in there that says.
No, that's fine. I didn't think about that.
That's the only one that occurred to me, but are there, I don't think there are others, are there, that come to mind?
No. No, I have a drawer of the the trash and go up drawer for licenses in the drawer for new registrations.
Yeah.
On the other side is the zoning. You know, it's a different zoning administrator than, you know, that would kick in, right? We don't have different departments. We do have different departments.
Need a bigger desk. More drawers.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't know.
Leaving it as in suspense, that works.
Yeah, as you're reading that, preparing and depositing funds, Gail, if you could just think through that scenario, the plant sale scenario, and make sure it works. Um. I got a little stuck on the second one here, under auditing, because we're telling ourselves we're gonna pay thirty thousand dollars every ten years for an audit. So I changed the language. I would suggest.
You know, that was in brackets there. Yeah, I'm just gonna fit something and put it in.
Yeah, I changed it, uh, I just edited it to say, instead of saying will cause the town not less than every ten years, the select board will consider having the town financial statements be audited by a qualified, properly licensed, independent accounting firm, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that we're not tying a future board, but certainly considering it, um, is reasonable.
Is that something we budget for?
We've done one, the one for the bond.
Right.
I, I think, is that true?
Right, I don't know if there was one back in the nineties or not.
Remember there was one for the school, right?
There was one at one point. The school has always had, there's done a year.
And it's not that expensive.
Well, it's because they do it every year, right?
Yeah.
But I know there was one before because the treasurer before me didn't deposit somebody's check, a relative's check until they got their spring tax refund, got written up for that, but. Normally it's just the town auditors who do the auditing.
Okay.
Yeah, and we, we have an excellent team right now.
Yeah.
Sandy.
That's right, and Steve Boyett was auditor for a while and he set up a system, so, and Sandy understands it and figures out what's.
Yep.
But then if we if in ten years we, for some reason have to have an audit done, it'll cost
Thirty thousand dollars, well, it costs thirty thousand this time.
Yeah.
And like the school, we're only, it's only required every three years, but they charge the same if you do it every year or every three years because they have to go back and look at everything, so the school just automatically did it every year.
Yep.
So they got quite into the budget and just kept that. You know, you might want an audit, when I get done as treasurer, the incoming treasurer might want things audited.
Think about it for next year's budget.
Give a little warning so we could budget for.
Fund, I don't want.
Yeah, and then when you tell us how much that reserve fund will be, we'll get a sense of what your future plans are.
No.
Okay, uh, I would, uh, make a motion that we ask Gail to, uh, edit the areas we had questions on and present these to us for the February meeting for review and review.
I would second that motion.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi. Okay, uh, I had a note about the energy report, and this is in reference to the item in the minutes where we said we didn't have anyone to go to this meeting, and then Todd Dennis did go and he sent us very detailed notes. And there is a program for municipalities to uh, electrify their operations, um, which I believe generally means weatherizing your buildings and installing heat pumps and could be transportation, but I haven't actually didn't see that in his notes very detailed. Um, it is still being developed, but we got a lot of information from his, uh, notes, and so that was very helpful. And I think the Gail has expressed an interest in having this be building be um, have heat pumps installed.
Yeah.
Um, and it all comes together because we probably can't put in the heat pumps unless we upgrade the service, and if we get the grant to put in the generator, it includes upgrading the service.
Right.
And if it, if you don't get that grant, I think you can actually include upgrading the service in this other grant. Yeah, great. So that's just an update on that.
And who was writing the grant?
Well, the process doesn't even exist yet, so TBD. I'm paying attention to it. Um, but my colleagues are working on it, see, so I just say, what's happening? Make sure I don't miss it. Okay, now for the bad news. Gail, the common level appraisal and coefficient of dispersion for twenty twenty-three. Um, if you guys would like Gail to explain this to you, it is, uh, interesting math, and it's the last three pages of the package. Oh, boy.
Oh, boy.
Every year, the state tax department compares what properties sell for, what the town hasn't assessed that. And that comes up as the common level appraisal, and it's a three-year rolling average, so some of the newer sales are not yet in this study.
Yeah.
They go from April first to April first for three years.
Oh, so it's just gonna get worse.
It's gonna get worse, yes.
One would imagine everyone is seeing this, though.
Yes, in Rutland County, there's out of the twenty-seven towns in Rutland County, eight of them are not under order to reappraise.
Oh, yeah.
One town did it in twenty twenty-two. There's a couple that are.
Ahead of the game.
But you, you C L A, you want it to be at a hundred, that's means if I sell it for a hundred thousand dollars, that's what we have to assess that.
Yeah.
Um, and so because stuff is selling crazy, it's just, it gets out of sight.
Yeah.
So with the state, you have to be, your C L A, common level appraisal, has to be above eighty-five or below a hundred and fifteen. Because sometimes when you do a reappraisal, it gets whacky the other way, so the fact rate don't go down.
Right.
Because it's not assessed, and the C L V, the coefficient of dispersion is how properties are treated in relation to other properties in town, and that needs to be under twenty.
So for those of you on the phone, our C L A is at seventy-seven point four three percent, so it is under eighty-five. And our coefficient of dispersion is twenty-two point oh eight percent, so it is over twenty. So as Gail was saying, we will need to begin the process of hiring.
Hiring, we're crazy.
Right, so.
What I would like to do in the meantime is have the board move to ask for a redetermination, because when I looked at some of those sales, they're not arms-like transactions, they should have been kicked, but for some reason the state used them. And so they're throwing the thing off. They have, um, our ones, which is a house in less than six acres, they have three lake properties, and the lake properties are just gone.
Yeah.
And they're gone. Yeah. Gaga.
Yeah.
So unto themselves, you know. So they'll our district advisor will come, she'll go over them, last, the last couple of years they've had to come and do appraisals. You know, they do a drive-by appraisal just to come up with the values and what it would be.
Yeah.
Using two thousand and sixteen standards, because that's where I made this as a and that bumped it some, but, you know, last year we were at ninety-one, year before we were at ninety-eight, so it's a downward trend.
Yeah.
But we are second lowest from the bottom in Rutland County with our C L A right now.
Meaning we're, ours is lower.
Seventy-seven.
There's only one other person lower than us.
Lower than seventy-seven. There's a lot in the eighties and yeah, a couple in the nineties. So I typed out a letter there if you're to sign.
Yeah.
And so.
Yeah, I'm.
So I would make a motion that we authorize the listeners to appeal the C L A. Yes.
Board has to.
Petition.
Okay, I would make the motion that the select board appeal and that we authorize Kathy to sign it as chair. That sounds weird. One of you can make that motion.
I will make the motion that we petition for, uh,
Redetermination of the Tinmouth E E P V.
Yeah.
There it is.
And I'll authorize, I would make a motion that we authorize Kathy to sign it.
You know, second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Good, thank you. We did this last year and it went down.
I remember.
Backfires, but, yeah.
Right, it's never. Well.
Okay, anything else on that, Gail? Real fit.
Also.
Uh, review draft morning for March seventh is the back page.
And so I just took the liberty of putting out the forum there if you wanted to transfer some of the unconverted general one.
And we decided we're going to not, yeah, we're just gonna carry it forward, correct? Or?
I hadn't heard about anybody doing petitions for any particular public questions, so I don't know if there will be any or not, but they have until the nineteenth to turn until midnight of the nineteenth.
Giving you lots of time to respond, right?
I don't even know.
Well, it goes from
The nineteen.
Deadline of some from the Secretary of State's office is from twelve oh one A M to eleven fifty-nine P M.
So you had said, and this is our next item.
So typically we have a meeting after that date in case a petition comes in and then officially sign the warning, because it has to be between thirty and forty days until meetings late this year on the seventh.
Yeah.
Of March.
Okay, so the info meeting is the twelfth, and then the vote is the seventeenth.
Yes.
So we're gonna meet on the seventeenth. And then you'll call us quickly on the nineteenth if something comes in after that. Is that the plan?
I'm asking you, I put it out there for you guys to figure out.
So the twelfth is the info meeting, and seventeenth is?
Is a voting and.
To count them. There is gonna be an E and I meeting right after.
Do, and do we have to warn that we're going to be approving this at that gathering, that meeting?
You'll have to have a right warning.
Yeah, you'll have a little meeting.
Once you want.
Good. That sounds fine.
Yeah.
And what time in seventeenth do we do on this?
Well, you're counting at seven, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Then what are you gonna count or just gonna show?
Yep.
Yeah, I'll go count.
Yeah.
So the select board will meet at seven fifteen. You'll be done by seven thirty, so you know. For that warning, you'll move to say for the new center.
Right, yeah, I put it on my hand.
Don't wash your hand.
I washed.
Okay, eight oh three, we are doing very well. I'm sorry.
Starting there at seven seventeen.
Yep.
Putting it in my.
Calendar, good idea.
And it should be easy counting because you're just gonna sort them into yes and no files.
Right. Right. Yeah. Okay. Uh, and the, uh, that's all I have for new business, uh, feedback form.
Hmm.
Members' concerns.
Yeah.
Um. I'll state this as a concern really just so it can get back on our agenda, which is, um, I had asked you, Gail, about a town credit card. And I think we talked about it and you said the last time you tried it was really hard.
I think we need to go to a different bank, a cheating bank.
It was hard?
Yeah.
Yeah. Could you, um, research that?
A credit card or a debit card?
Debit card.
Uh, I I would say a credit card.
It's a credit card.
Mm-hmm.
Not gonna be a debit card.
Yeah, the idea would be, for example, if, uh,
For things like the website.
SSL thing.
Yeah.
Or Eric wants to order something on Amazon or. Yeah, right.
Listen, why wouldn't you wanna do a debit card?
That means.
If somebody gets the debit card, then you clean out your account.
Right.
With a credit card, you're only liable for fifty bucks if somebody takes it and
True, okay.
Does something.
Is there, and are there other towns that have like?
I think most towns have a credit card.
But I mean, just like who they use, like who, who they use for.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I'm, there's so many different ones out there. There must be somebody, the municipalities.
We have a debit card for the fire department, it's separate account. We keep a certain amount of money in it.
That's another approach.
That's what we do. We keep two hundred and fifty dollars in our debit card account.
Well, we've got Eric in Mexico, why isn't it twenty-five thousand?
That's gonna be a challenge.
And if you wanna make a move, yeah, you'd have to go for the orders and ask them to create a separate account.
I don't.
No, that's a reserve fund.
Yeah, just a reserve fund.
Yeah, reserve funds.
We have so many bank accounts, I'm pretty sure that that's.
Yeah, we have lots of them.
Yeah.
I would like accounts for all the little entities.
We were gonna do a credit card. We did, we did, because of the fees and stuff, so we just did a debit card, separate account, with a debit card with a small amount.
Yep.
That's something that your listener would have an answer for, like the.
Except I can't access the listener, because B T L has a filter that blocks it from U V M, because U V M is uses some source someplace, it's one of ten that has a lot of spam attached to it, so B T L will not let
Oh, man.
Little downtown clerk is having bits, but.
Yeah.
So far she hasn't convinced the listener, U V M listener, to use more secure.
Right.
Place to send out. You don't have access to.
You could create a Gmail account, and then anytime you had a list search question, you'd have to go read that account. Would keep all the answers in one place, that wouldn't.
Gmail wouldn't let me create an account. The one, my user ID was Gmail sucks and it said, sorry, can't. Because I would try and create one. Didn't work.
She's sorry.
Um, so could you, uh, put that on our agenda for the next meeting and get them? Um, I have one other, uh, concern slash statement. Um, I am hoping to not run for the select board this next time around. I do want to ensure that there will be uh, a candidate or candidates. Um, I, Gail told me that there are several people who are considering running, but she would not tell me who they are, so perhaps you could share that now, Michael and I are here, we could all know at the same time who they are. And I would be happy to follow people and see if they have questions or if that seems appropriate or not, um. But I would love for us to make sure that we don't end up with out candidates or.
Give people time to.
Give people time to think about.
Think about it. Thank you for your.
Well, so I'm hoping Gail's gonna tell us who the other people are.
Well, she.
Doesn't seem to me that.
Not officially following that they are running, so they're still thinking about it, so.
I find it quite interesting that
My choice.
You are the holder of this secret information as a town official.
Yeah.
Let's go.
There you go.
Well, maybe at our next meeting, they can, though.
No, they have to, they have to petition.
Oh, yeah.
You'll know who's running, but.
Right.
Okay. Well, there you go.
Well, there you go. Um, any other concerns? Uh, any miscellaneous correspondence or mail? Executive session. Next meeting, January twelfth. Uh, informational meeting, we're gonna show up at six or a six-thirty meeting.
We're gonna get to each other so much this month.
No, we're ready to adjourn? So I would accept our motion.
I'll make a note when we adjourn.
Okay, good. There you go.
You agree by everything by consensus, but you have to make a motion to adjourn?
You know.
Nice.
Whatever. We're just keeping you on your toes, Gail.
Yeah, I'm gonna like that. Never turned off the recording now. We don't know.
Oh, I'm good.